Download the My Hingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease. Available on the App Store and Google Play. You can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps on your phone. Using the My Hingham app puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, and info about our boards, committees, departments, and services. For more information, please scan the QR code on your screen.
Good evening. It is 6:00 PM November 20th, 2024. I'm opening this meeting of the Snick Board of Hingham. This meeting is being held in Hering and on remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting. Who are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by town opinion in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else reporting? Being none, I will note for the record that attending or participating in this meeting this evening, Ramsey, Liz Klein, and Monk W. Dick. Begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. You are willing to vote for the step.
I don't, I'm not even speaking or clapping. I'll be the next to the back. It's you, my public, for whose fans. One nation under your God. In this month, the integrity has stood strong.
What's on our agenda? Very important items to agenda. It's a check presentation. I'm going to ask you if you can just, Michelle did all over it on this helmet. Okay, we'll have Michelle.
Sure, thank you. So we are joined by Plymouth County Commissioner Sandra Wright and by their treasurer Tom O'Brien this evening. We have been working with the county for the last few years because they've made over $4 million in ARPA funds available to Hingham for various projects. And tonight they're here to present a check for over $500,000 that is mostly supporting the new public safety facility in town, but it's also reimbursing us for costs related to a COVID testing center during the later part of the pandemic and for the economic development plan that Art's been spearheading. So we appreciate all of the resources that come through the county. We look forward to some more.
The reputation of this capital is just superb. I mean, I've heard from above the towns and just generally the work that you've done to make sure that the funds come to the residents and the businesses of the state is outstanding. And it's widely recognized, maybe it needs to be even more widely recognized, the work that you've done, but we greatly appreciate it. So, so thank you.
Thank, first of all, Senator Taffey, Dr. General, General CEO, for almost the work that we've done from the middle of the past. It wasn't very tangible in the beginning, but you know, with their support, we will be dying instead of kids' parents, you know, our program of waiting after. So I just wanted to say that, you know, which came to mind recently, I've spoken around the county, a lot of people that I do, excited talking and welcome to government. And most people don't know what, that who cares that this is happening because, you know, we've been so much work anyway. So I always feel like, oh, we're doing that education class, we have a town. Everybody does what, you know, I think, and now it is active. So it's, you know, an education right there on the spot, which is great. I don't mind, but I just want to say, and you wind down, I'd like to remind you that these programs became a real tough reality as never before experienced. Open, you know, stuff that we never went through. We had, you know, a lot to like discern what we were going to do and how we're going to do it. Of course, thanks to Treasurer Ryan, you know, but he has knowledge and leadership. And, you know, we depend on him so much, you know, let me out of the office of his own. Or actually.
No, we're not. He's stayed the ball and changed.
The protect closely, they may have undertaken a process in administering the PUS Act and have funds by delivering twice as much money in half the time. They're doing it at only 1% administrative cost, which leads us to needing more money on the table for you people. And that's what we like to do. We like to, you know, serve our nowadays and as much as we can, um, and asking very little, just let us commence on the check sheet. That's about it. So I know that we get to present three checks tonight, totally 502,000. Well, you know, no, I'm sorry, 502,309. And what's like programs that you put together and just normal, you know, we could have just helped the town of Hingham over 90, but I didn't know it developed strategy plan with public safety facility, which definitely will bring more value, you know, to the town of Hingham. But first of all, I'd like to, well, next I'd like to go in and just say 502,000. It sounds like a lot of money, but I just want to tell you all of the last four years, what we've allocated to the expected percent. So for the kids that have given you $3,757,289.31, the difference that our community took after funds is 434,351.94. Uh, so I just want to say here, the commissioners, treasurer, we all greatly appreciate you. Like this work, we have a privilege of seeing Tom, your team, and such a brilliant job. And there'll be asked a lot of you, and I know Tom has always been a man of ideas to help you. He died, so I greatly appreciate everything. And can show you though, one thing is that this money will never be like that. We have Tom, we know that he has passed every team, gotten every high. And, you know, again, like I said, he's got great leadership on that install chip. So I greatly appreciate everything. Thank you. We can all get past, you don't like that.
Also, I just want to plug an address down below, which again, we should be here, but they had other obligations, so they said two of them. I really appreciate you coming to recognition that. But that's how you get as far as best book for it. And I was. And it's best because we're close to the people. If there's an issue that Tom or Michelle or our, they can call us. They don't have to worry about on the expert's plate, you found the Capitol Hill, pardon me, ground, the maze of federal government or even state government, we're, you know, we're local. So we know what you need and we've been able to deliver these resources back to you. And they have very tight connection for projects that are important to the community. That's the element that we know that you have these means and get these, the monies out as quickly as possible to you. I was also very glad that Mr. Wright highlighted the administrative watch of this program. So I don't know if you're aware, but at the federal level, the administrative account averages most people that are dealing with 70%. That's not the least of all, especially in the D. In most states, we know that the administrative cost is about 5%. Uh, in some of the areas that really get down, it's 3. 3.3 only, it's 1%. And that's because they don't have a job. So like, that's because we got to make any. We want to see it, yes. But this has been important. We get everybody else. I'd also appreciate the crowd, but we were one of the only entities, government, that we that took care of money that didn't return a pay, even if not a penny, the type of government. Most states had to return money, both the community side and return money. Any other kind of community and the kind of public didn't reach our home. We're on the same track, but there can be a lot of unfortunate stories, of course, that may be about perhaps some of the unintended poor uses of the money. But that's on private, we get, we're a pretty rigorous program. I apologize to Tom and Michelle for having rigorous sex on the ground. But it's that's all. And really make sure that we're in a state, I know, from the, I, we're comfortable with that. What's another service that we, that we're doing all that work, Georgie does that? And we know that's a good time. And we'll be happy to know that we can receive some level recognition or administrative program, we see that special award for that. And so at least other people aren't getting attention, but we're glad that people, you know, they, especially on the board, you know, you do notice, but you're with this. They aren't the pleasure tour. They just know that they have, you already know, some part of the questions that call us. For a while, they were really on Tom and he's done. He was privately keeping my cell phone. I would like to answer. It was very well. And just to make sure you get these in our, you know. I'm always thrilled that we allow out from, I think, for this town, I think. But yes, anything other thoughts of our kids and then being invited to give a photo of the team. I must hold, I do not contact my mom unless it was more than 500. By October and November, totally 502,000. So we, we bet the word Rick to be here, okay? Happy to be here.
Well, I was going to add something real quick. Michelle was looking to, but, you know, throughout the process, Treasurer Ryan, you've been keeping up with us in terms of identifying what money we were able to get, how to get the money, how to use it. So, uh, but Tom said, you know, anyone's be dialed. Really appreciate your thoughts on this and just how you guide a little. Keep out of the.
It's also very appropriate that the lion's share of the 5,000 been with our new public safety building and our leadership of the department. So, um, so thank you for our, well, instead of our budget really has less.
I don't have any questions, just congratulations and thank you. We appreciate your leadership, your partnership and the efficiency that you've been able to work with us and the efficiency and effectiveness of using the funds. Certainly our team has worked very hard to put the funds to good use. And they, they really have their, these are not frivolous projects. These are critical needs for this community. So we are very appreciative. Thank you.
So with that, there's a same connection. It's just, you know, double bringing. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, what was it? All right. It's just, you know, double bringing. Well, I just want to, I'm, I'm really, I think they want those. Uh, all like the, this is the one that's got, that one. I'm pretty sure one of the trades are burning.
No, I'm sorry. Thank you.
How was that 1% administrative? Chief Jones, if you don't mind coming up, that will have a charity who's, uh, there, uh, we're not, they'll do it. You told there are, there are, when you take the photos, there are Easter eggs on this check. So we're hoping people will look and try to trigger them all. We can go over the back door if you. Ready? So, Miles, one more, two, three. I did.
That works, eh? About 1620.
Yeah, so what does that mean? 12, what's it mean for me? Trying to be the foul. Yeah. But I think, in bizarre, hitting the security store, you find the meat. They're hitting in the rats. That's going to be hard. The other reason is up here. That's the year that comes. So that point is good. And then the last one is the road. That's the platinum nation from shelter when we're, there it's done. It's delicate. That's a, it's a, I mean, I'm doing this, yeah. I mean, I think we get people, but we still know we didn't back home. We used to build on that. Oh, you're in. They have to, on his name, you know, they said, I think Jared said, oh, yeah, this. Jared likes it. So that's why we did this. Good move. Thank you. Yeah.
I guess that is worth.
Nothing. Yes.
No, that's fine.
Oh.
This is right. Thank you.
This last one.
Oh, absolutely.
Dinner.
They were, yes, we had the next.
I'd ask Chief Jones to.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. So I'm honored to come before you today to discuss a potential appointment of Ryan Hogan as our next police recruit. Ryan has demonstrated an exceptional character and dedication, both in his service to our country and is in ongoing pursuit of a career in law enforcement. Ryan served honorably in the United States Marine Corps, where he learned the values of discipline, leadership, and selfishness. He commit, his commitment to duty under often challenging circumstances speaks to his resilience and his capacity to handle responsibilities. Since transitioning back to civilian life, Ryan has maintained a stable work history and is currently pursuing a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Ryan also has a desire to work in a department where he can make a difference. In fact, he withdrew from the hiring process for the Boston Police Department to have an opportunity to work for us here in Hingham. I believe Ryan's background, combined with his drive to further his education and his passion for serving others, makes him an ideal candidate for our department. He has the qualities we look for in our officers, integrity, dedication, and a genuine desire to serve. I recommend that the board offer Ryan Hogan a conditional offer of employment as a new police recruit, and I thank you for your consideration.
Well, I'll ask you, what's best? Each time you make a call to us, you earn your reservation back in.
I have no reservations at all.
Good hope. Any questions? Uh, no questions. Just want to end it on, in condition to our vote, congratulate you, um, Ryan. Your department leadership, our success, and you want me to succeed. I keep wanting you to be successful. So, um, reaching the best luck we've told me. And that's a lot putting on them here in P. Well, thank you. So I appreciate it.
No questions. I appreciate the presentation, chief, and your vote of confidence and recommendations. Certainly I was impressed with Ryan's military service, his professionalism and values. And I, I feel confident that he's very much aligned with our core values of integrity, service, excellence, and leadership. So I support this appointment.
I will say that the interviews we had conducted a week ago really came across that is, um, is exceptionally qualified as garnish of someone thinking, even all the way should be in our workforce. My one reservation is, you know, what the Hanover baseball. But, uh. And like the chief, I have no reservations. So with that, I am preparing to take a motion. I make a motion to establish a conditional offer in the ambition of Ryan's involvement as a permanent police officer in the town of Hingham. This offer is contingent upon the successful passing of required medical and psychological screening examination, all of the requirements related to, but not necessarily limited to the following. A, successful passing of the required medicine. B, successful passing of required physical ability test, EAPD. C, successful passing of the required psychological screening process. D, successful passing of all other requirements for entrance into the police academy. E, entering into a satisfactory agreement with the town of Hingham relative to repayment of the $4,650 for pre-training fee and costs of any initially issued police equipment if the appointed officer sees an employee in the town of Hingham Police Department within the first five years. F, successful completion of the police academy as determined by the police chief. And G, subject to an available appropriation and any all other requirements as mandated by law or regulation.
Second.
All call vote. Bill. I. Liz.
I.
I have an eye as well. It is unanimous. I'll pick one up.
Congratulations. I'm from, congratulations.
I'll be in. It seems to me the night. Yeah. Not. You're going to put him, you're all right. Let's say, you know. Good night, sir. Thank you.
Very hard to support.
Thank you, Sharon.
I don't need to. We have no. You know.
Yes.
Yeah, he's something like.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything, that's all. Okay. Okay, thanks for finding them on our agenda. It's a considerable issue of a special. Yep.
Yeah, and probably initially, like. The current left vote, they either off, forget them. Um, next year, we're, we're taking out parts charities that are both old or in a sort of hope, they tell me one of our whole table. Where can I agree, uh, he, you know, calls for, basically, Martin. On, I mean, we're allowed to have a block, um, which is how, how for years, but you're still not, um, we, and you, we're hard.
Obviously.
You can find this year, the black and it's all green or, it's all the, you know. The black, well, it's unpopular. Yeah.
More respect.
So we need to have, we're a company that's out, but we have them, yeah, last year, we sold thirty. And then, um, the civil world, we're, we're getting for ourselves. That's him.
Uh, you have a special license to talk topics.
Okay, including.
You have any questions?
Well, thanks, Simpson, but I can. This is an event that's near here and certainly benefits the whole South of the community. I don't have any questions. I see that they have a tips to file observer. Um, the application looks complete, so I have no questions or concerns.
Yep. Great event, great day of the day, Kendra. Thanks, Dr. Dear, opportunity. Looks good. I want to be application complete. What other issues, uh, the police department has raised? So Chief, is that a sport detail? And he has, let's sign off, yeah. Are there leading members of the public? I think here, none. How many questions? Seeing nine, I'm prepared to take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the issuance of a one-day special all alcohol beverages license for the Hingham Women's Club for the Festival of Trees to be held at the Hingham Community Center on Friday, December 6th, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Thank you. We'll call vote. Liz.
I.
Bill. I. I'm with that as well. Congratulations.
Good luck. Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Next, on the agenda. That patient for a common victory was admitted from. Other? Tate Bakery and Cafe, you got into Germany, number one, oh, no. I'm trying to boil here. I can't really see moving stuff.
Yeah, that's me. Sorry for my appearance. I'm, uh, I had a work trip. Just got off a plane. I couldn't move the trip, so apologies. I'm not there with you, but here I am.
Terrific. So just please explain what we are looking to see.
Yeah, so Tate Bakery and Cafe, um, we've leased about 4,500 square feet at Derby Street Shops. We are a bakery and cafe restaurant concept. Uh, no alcohol. We've got about 100 interior seats and 20 patio seats. And we'll be serving breakfast, lunch, and dinner Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to eight, or 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Uh, and Saturday and Sunday, or Saturday from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM and Sunday from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
But I will tell you that there are many residents in this town looking forward to your opening.
You know, I grew up, I was born and raised in Hingham. I grew up at 145 Martins Lane. Um, and my sisters both live in Hingham. My parents live right around the corner in Hanover, so I'm, I'm thrilled to be bringing it down to my family and to be bringing it down to all the residences, residents of Hingham. So, you know, we're thrilled to be there.
Liz, any questions?
No questions, um, other than I'm assuming the application is complete and no concerns.
Good enough.
Okay, excellent. Yes, we're excited for you to open.
Liz. Awesome. Thank you very much.
I, I actually had some treats this morning from the one in Boston.
Did you?
Yes. Yep.
Wonderful. You won't have to go all the way into Boston anymore.
Right.
I have no questions. Good luck, Brendan.
All right. Thank you so much.
Um, any, uh, anyone else online with any comments or questions?
Um, any of, anyone else, uh, online with any comments or questions? So I, uh, I review this as well. I think this is a fine addition to the company. I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I make a motion to approve the issuance of a common victory license that has any be active located in. For common victory license film, fighting him on November fourth, twenty twenty four, effective through December thirty first, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz.
I.
Bill.
I.
I might as well. It's approved. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Take one.
Thanks a lot. We'll see you there soon.
Yes. Next item is to consider approval of the application for change of ownership interest in Shipyard Ventures LLC doing business as Almanove. To the Shipyard Drive in Dingham. And yeah, it's I would make.
Yes, hi. Good evening.
Whatever you got.
All right, sorry, my camera. April, can you see me?
We can see you and hear you.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Um, this is a, a simple change of ownership at Almanove. We have one of our LLC members that has left the area. And the company is redeeming, uh, uh, his interest. So no new. Coming into the fray. We're just, uh, buying out, uh, John Fuller's and, and his fifteen percent will be approved.
Our machine reviewed the documents. I know that they were, uh, uh, amended, uh, earlier today and they were completely. Liz, any questions?
Uh, no questions. The application looks complete. Um, yeah, I don't have any questions or concerns.
Well.
I have any questions. Just want to point that out on that. I very much appreciate all of the support that Almanove, while Harvard provides the community, whether it's, uh, H P D Think, uh, Fat Project, or, uh, providing lunch to the, uh, fat lady at the foster school. I know you all do a lot. Very much appreciate.
Appreciate that. We're happy to be a part of the community. Thank you.
Any member of the public with comments or questions? Seeing none, I am prepared to take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the request of Shipyard Ventures LLC doing business as Almanove twenty two Shipyard Drive, Hingham. Change of ownership interest in accordance with the application for change of ownership interest filed with the town of Hingham on October twenty second, twenty twenty four, subject to the approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second, roll call vote. Liz.
I.
Bill. I'm right, and I have an eye as well. Congratulations. That's been moved.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Take care.
Next item, it is to consider appointments or reappointments, and I believe we have the unmissing thing that we better consider. Bill?
Yes, I'd make a motion to appoint Evan Yelphen in the side of the town of Richard, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill.
I.
Liz.
I.
I as well. And, uh, I just make sure that, uh, evident.
Yeah.
Now is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not on the agenda. Any members of the public want to make comments? Beth, your hand is raised. If you just, uh, give us your name and address and then we are. Open for your comments.
Um, this is Bass Rockoff at thirty six Pleasant Street. And I was listening to two meetings within the last two weeks. The one from the Historic Commission about Tranquility Grove and the one Rec Department, um, in regards to the new. I don't know what you call it now. It's the old seniors center. Um, and I was wondering why they proceed with doing the projects without checking to make sure that the land is available to be used for that purpose. It seems like they, with Tranquility Park, for example, they spent a substantial amount of money, and now there's some question whether because it's open wreck, not, you know, space, that it, um, shouldn't be used um, for the purpose that it's being planned for. And then at the rec department, they talked about putting the senior center behind the town hall or at Bear Cove Park, and the rec center made it clear that the land behind, which is Cronin Fields, may not, or is absolutely not allowed, according to them, to be used for that purpose. So I was wondering why the town does projects.
Directly with our town administrator, Tom Mayo. Uh, I will observe that what you are commenting on is in fact the vetting process that happens. Uh, so that in fact, the town will not be moving forward to the extent that there are projects that can't be done. Um, and if certain folks want to advocate projects, they are free to do so, but it goes through the appropriate process. And the issues that you raise, in fact, are the types of issues that will come out as various boards do appear. Uh, so I appreciate the comments, but again, I really restricted our ability to go, uh, into a dialogue at this point.
That might be tired in the morning.
Excuse me?
I could call you in the morning if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Good. Good to see you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Yeah.
Anyone else? With that, I will turn it to the town administrators, select four reports, beginning with his art participating, uh. Oh, there you are. I'm thinking, I'm thinking you're controlling them.
Thank you. I didn't have one I need to share this evening. Though earlier we heard, uh, from the public town, very great, their funding and support for economic developments to achieve a planning process. I just wanted to share that we have our next public session set for Monday, ninth of December. Uh, it will take place with seventy thirty volcano here in Hanover, second year of Saint's Week. It's wanting to get that work out. We'll be sharing a little bit more detail of between the bio. Press release and, and Facebook, uh, coming. Most be intended only, but certain that, uh, uh, can you get anything? We want to share with the community, where we are, we thought research. Uh, share some options and get some feedback regarding development opportunities and.
So, good for the residents and.
Well, residents. But we're certainly interested in getting feedback from businesses or property owners who are here, would certainly be interested to participate. Maybe hear what, what residents have seen.
Great. I know the first one. Well, can.
Joe. Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Like, yep, I just wanted to point out, so I've, uh, Sam and Tom were here earlier with that big check for a simple credit. And Tom, he really does a great job. I at least be responsible. But everything that the town got, uh, written through, the woman that being on the table down there, uh, Michelle. Everything that we got today, you read through. If that's because of her didn't, that we got that's. That's in opportunity, I think it's a, it's project. Thank you.
This.
Yes, thank you, Michelle. I was thinking the same thing. We're certainly appreciative, um, of all the counties doing, but having these shovel ready projects and well thought out, frankly, is, it makes us such good candidates. So, so thank you, Michelle, for all of your efforts. Um, just some fun things happening in the community. Um, the Hingham High Voice Soccer Team is going to the finals for the first flag, and then they play Saturday. The high school ball musical starts tomorrow night, runs through the weekend, and then the Hingham baseball holiday fair is Saturday, and everyone is welcome and deserves to come. And then just happy Thanksgiving. So don't forget it on next week.
Bye. Bill.
Yeah, I totally had those three things on. Thank you, everybody.
I'll just add one bit for Thanksgiving. There is the turkey trot.
Yes.
Um, and I believe that, like, a large crowd, and then I think they're still accepting signups. I do know that if you do sign up, get a T-shirt, so even if you're not a great runner and you're a walker, don't worry.
Oh. And the football game is, is scheduled at ten A M on Thanksgiving.
I think that, uh, I am prepared to accept the motion to adjourn. Make a motion, Ken.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
I.
Bill.
I.
I have an eye as well. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
We recognize that taking time to visit, call, or email our town departments to report issues in Hingham doesn't always fit your schedule. Are you looking for an easier way to communicate with the town? Well, now there's an easier way. With the MyHingham mobile app, you can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps of your phone. To get started, simply download the MyHingham app from the Apple App Store or Google Play. Or simply scan our Q R code to get the access to the app that's best for your phone. Once you've opened the app, select the Submit a Service Request button. From there, you can choose the type of request you want to submit, whether it's a pothole, a fallen tree, or something else. You'll then be prompted to take a photo of the issue and provide a brief description. You can also use the app to track the status of your issue and receive updates. Using MyHingham puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, information about our boards, committees, departments, and services. So why wait? Download the MyHingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease.